Oh, okay.
Gary, so they usually nail them out. I'll see if she's done it already.
Okay.
I got mine a couple of weeks ago.
Did you? Okay, he thought he had his, but I don't know.
So I'll just double check and see if she needs, I'll give her the attendance if she needs it.
Okay.
The February 12th Planning Commission meeting will come to order, or 13th, excuse me. First order of business is the Punchet Asians. Punchet Asians to the flag of the United States of America and to all the authorities standing at on the nation, I'm like, in the principle, we remember creating justice for all. Hey, roll call, please.
Mark Moudry?
Present.
Dan Kozinski?
Present.
Wendy Bradley?
Here.
Arnold Weinfeld?
Here.
Robert McConnell?
Present.
Rachel Elzinga? Jim Switzer?
Present.
Marita Proctor, present. We have four.
Thank you. Next is approval of agenda.
So moved.
Support. Approved by Mr. Kozinski, supported by Mr. Moudry that we approve the agenda as presented. All in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carrier. Next is approval of minutes.
Mr. Chair, move approval of the minutes of the January 23rd, 2023 Planning Commission meeting.
Support.
So moved, moved by, is supported by Ms. Bradley, vote by Mr. McConnell. It's Proctor.
I just have a question on the first page of the minutes, which is meeting minutes of December 12th, 2022.
There's a typo. Okay, I'll take that out, thank you.
Okay, and then also on item number five.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you so much.
I mean the vote.
Yeah.
So, has changes, okay with the? Mr. McConnell is?
Support, yeah.
I just want to clarify, I just want to clarify, Mr. Proctor, comment that the votes should be five, nothing, not seven, nothing. I wasn't here at church.
There was, yeah, I think you were the only two, I believe. I can double check that. It should be seven, I think. I can double check that, though.
And then five eight, the date should be changed.
Okay.
That's one of my favorite motions, though. Thank you.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Is all opposed? Motion carrier. Next is citizen comments for items not on tonight's agenda. Say none. Correspondents none, old business none. Public hearings.
Proctor. We have case number one dash two, three dash two, special land use permit request for a primary secondary school to be located at seven, five, two, zero Westshire Road, Lansing, Michigan, four, eight, nine, one, seven. And the applicant is Cedar Classical Academy.
Thank you. Matt, please.
All right, so this one, I don't, I realize I don't think I mentioned the report, but it's an existing building, seventy-five, twenty, Westshire Drive, wish to convert a former office building into a primary and secondary school. The applicant received two variances related to site special land use request. They were received a variance in January to allow the play area, if you're still inclined to approve the special land use permit, the play area will be located within the front setback area from Canal Road. That's generally not allowed, but just given the fact that it was an existing building with kind of limitations, the zoning board of appeals approved it. The second variance they got was the requirement that they be located on a primary road. In this instance, they're the primary road will be Canal. They didn't, for, you know, understandable reasons, didn't want to relocate the entrance on the canal. The road commission had no issues and the zoning board of appeals approved that variance. So basically, looking, existing school, looking to expand as they grow into a full K to twelve, I believe right now you're, they can explain that better, but not quite a full K through twelve. Looking for a building that will accommodate that, this building will, it's going to be fully, no buses, it's going to be parents' carpools. Essentially, looking to convert the site, like I said, the play area is going to be here. They're thinking that they average about two and a half kids in a car. They submitted a traffic study that said that it's not going to exacerbate any issues on Canal or Westshire, and that it's not an issue. I didn't identify any other issues. I'm happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is here to answer questions as well.
Mr. Weinfeld.
Um. Matt, this is to you and for the applicant. What about kitchen area? Uh, food, storage, and the like?
I do not know that info. Yeah, we can ask, we can get the applicant to speak on that.
Can the applicant come up for a moment? Please state your name and address for the record.
Caroline Hummel, one, four, one, nine, Clifton Avenue, Lansing. In answer to your question, we don't have any hot lunches. Everyone brings sack lunches, so we won't be using any kitchen or food prep area.
Okay, so you don't have need for refrigerator or storage like that, that you might be using as well?
That's correct.
Okay. One other question. In regard to the zoning board of appeals granting the variance regarding the play area, do you intend to put a fence up?
Yes, we do. The fence is shown on the site plan, and it does include some setback and also maintains the green belt that's required by the ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Stay there, please.
Okay. I will.
There's four overhead doors out.
That's correct.
We're revising, remodeling this structure quite a bit.
We intend on keeping the overhead doors, but replacing them with a modern version. We actually really like that inspection bay area and intend to use it for gym. So that area can be indoor, outdoor, with the overhead doors, we can open them up all the way, or keep them closed, and there is a heating element in there.
Also, for ninety-one students, attempting to grow to a hundred and twenty next year, doesn't seem to be enough building space for that, if it's all one, that's just one story.
It is one story, yes. It's ten thousand, three hundred and forty square feet. We intend to grow to one hundred and five students next year in K through ten. We have ninety-one this year in K through nine. The occupancy load for on our, our architect, John, permits show four hundred and twelve could fit in there. Obviously, we won't fit everyone in there. But we, in our first renovation that we sent along plans for, we're planning on ten classroom areas. So it will be compact, but efficient.
Okay. Mr. Kozinski?
Yeah, you know, given your particular style of teaching, will it be divided up all into discreet classrooms, or do you anticipate more open, common space for the educational functions?
We have our grades first through eight clustered into two grade classes, so first and second, third and fourth. That's why we need fewer classrooms than eleven. But we also have a couple of common areas, including a large room, we've termed a great hall, as well as the inspection bay and an art room that doesn't have doors to it. So a mixture of discreet classrooms and common areas.
Mr. Just, Mr. Moudry?
For staff, how are we doing on parking spots?
They need the parking spots for what they, for what they are, they're kind of planning to grow into.
And the single driveway?
Not an issue. I think the road commission gave you like some slight alterations, but no, otherwise, there's not really an issue with the driveway.
Okay, thank you.
It's Proctor.
For entrance off of Westshire Lane, when you exit out Westshire and assuming make the right and get to Canal Road, would that be a right turn only, or would that be left and right turn?
It would be left and right turn. So we are planning in that parking lot, a one-way, counterclockwise carpool lane. I believe on the site plan, the one-way signs are listed. Because there are so few cars, this year we have forty families, so forty cars. And a lot of our staff families also have children, so it's not the full forty always coming and going for each pickup and drop-off time. The traffic company did not see a problem with having both right and left turns out of that drive.
And for staff, how far is the traffic light from Westshire Drive?
There's not a light there, but I can, I can get you the approximate distance to the intersection if you'd like.
Yeah, so how far away is it? Because my concern is, coming out of Westshire, trying to make that left across Canal Road at eight o'clock in the morning?
Right.
That can be a little tricky.
And that looks like.
That's why I ask if you'll be required to make a right turn or to get out and across traffic.
Well, they can also make a left turn and go and hook up with Saginaw.
Yeah, take Westshire up to Saginaw.
Yeah.
Well, so I understand that you're asking from Westshire onto Canal, left or right turn? Okay.
Correct.
Sorry, I was, I thought you were asking on the drive. I understand. Yes, so we, well, we entertained the idea of doing a right turn only, and we suggested that to the traffic company. They didn't see that the numbers and supported that that had to be so, but that's something that we would entertain. We do foresee more traffic going out towards Saginaw the other way rather than using Canal, though.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair? Mr. McConnell?
Matt, will the, will additional signage be required on Canal for school?
I don't, I don't believe so, but I could, I could look into it with the road commission. The road commission didn't, didn't have an issue with it, but I can, I can see if they would require signage there. That's, that's outside of my department generally, but I could, I could look into that with them, if you're interested in that. But yeah, I don't have an answer for you right now, unfortunately.
But you wouldn't anticipate?
I wouldn't anticipate necessarily, and if they did, I think that's a kind of a regular function of the road commission to put up a sign if they need.
One more question. The school is a, is a private school.
That's correct.
So the admission requirements for students, is anybody there willing to pay?
Well, we have a mission and vision statement. We're a pretty unique school. We're a classical Christian school. And so we do have an admissions process that includes student assessment, parent interview, things like that. But if parents love the mission, we want them at our school.
Can you elaborate a little bit?
Yeah, thank you. Can you elaborate on your own security features for the school?
What particularly? The fence, or?
Just security in general.
Okay, great. So existing at our current building, we keep the doors locked during all of school hours. We always have teachers come out with the students equipped with radios for the intermittent recesses for pickup and drop-off, things like that. At pickup, teachers stay with their class until all of the students are released to their parents in their car identified by the teacher. Teachers stay out with their class until every student has been picked up. And then whenever students are outside for recess, there are regular checks of where the students are, and make sure that they all get back inside the building. We, there's not a fence at our current location. It's nine acres off of Velkemos Road, but we do intend to fence this area. Is there anything else? Any other category?
Generally, no.
Thank you.
It's Proctor.
So do you provide any type of snack or milk or anything like that?
We do not. Everyone brings their own lunches.
Their own beverage as well?
That's right.
Thank you.
Any other questions? This is a public hearing. Anyone wishes to address the board? Now, entertaining motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to close the public hearing.
Second. Removed by Mr. Weinfeld, supported by Mr. Kozinski, we close the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carrier. Who serves?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Kozinski?
I move that the Planning Commission recommend to the Delta Township Board of Trustees approval of the special land use permit for a primary secondary school as requested by Cedar Classical Academy as described in case number one dash twenty-three dash two for the following reasons, of which there are two, with the following conditions of approval, of which there is one.
Support. The move by Mr. Kozinski, supported by Mr. Moudry, that we approve the Cedar Classic Academy. This is a roll call vote.
Mr. McConnell?
With support.
Mr. Kozinski?
Support.
Ms. Bradley?
Support.
Mr. Weinfeld?
Support.
Mrs. Switzer?
Support.
Marita Proctor supports Mr. Moudry.
Support. Day. Matt, please.
All right, so this was a recommendation to the township board for approval. I can get you on next Monday night's board meeting, if that's amenable to you. Okay, so I will, I will send them the memo this week, and then it'll be same time, same room next week, just with a different body. So I'll, I'll follow up with you this week and let you know. So, yep, see you next week.
Thank you.
Mr. Proctor, excuse me.
Okay, sorry about that. We have case number one dash two, three, just three, request for special land use permit approval for a childcare, I'm sorry, child daycare center to be located at three, zero, two, South Waverly Road, Lansing, Michigan. And the applicant is Tanya Sims.
That was right. All right, so three, oh, two, South Waverly, so kind of a similar request to the previous one, in a lot of ways. So it previously, an office building, they're trying to convert a portion of it to a childcare center. Basically, the entire lower floor would be childcare with an entrance off of Waverly here. Secondary access from Hume Boulevard, and then a handicap access from, from right here is the only spot where handicap can be accessed. They also were at the ZBA two or three weeks ago for, they had three variances, the same variance as the, as the previous applicant for a five thousand square foot. The childcare centers are required five thousand square feet of contiguous open space, and it requires that it not be in the front yard setback. Being that this is an existing building with three frontages, that makes it extremely difficult to, to accomplish that, so they're, they want to put it here. They got a variance to allow that. Similar, they also get a variance to allow just a normal green belt landscaping between the property here and then the residential area. Normally, they'd be required a type B buffer. But again, given the limited space and kind of the nature of what they're doing there, being that it'd be just basically kids playing, and that wouldn't be too dissimilar from the residential area, they granted that, and the, the third variance were granted was to not have to curb their parking area. The water drains towards Otis, and they didn't want to go to the additional expense of having to curb that and can come up with a means of handling stormwater, and the zoning board of appeals was happy to grant that as well. So those issues are off the the planning commission's plate. Basically, I, again, didn't really identify any real issues with this. They, they met all the standards, in my view. Happy to answer any questions for you, and then the applicant is also here to answer any questions as well.
Matt, with the way that closed the parking lot from, from three, ten, well, it's down towards the back end.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. Yep. So that was part, yeah, part of the reason why they didn't want to do the curbed. So when they go through site plan review, they didn't want to have to give that curbed parking, just so they could accommodate that stormwater kind of as it already flows, but.
So how is that going to be alleviated?
The, the, the water flows.
Water flowing into the, actually into the player.
We can, that's something they, they'll have to address during site plan review with the drain commission. I, I mean, I believe that the engineer has accounted for that, but I, I, that would be, would be something they would, they would address that. It's like during site plan review.
Mr. Weinfeld?
Matt, can you enlighten me as to the buffer area and what constitutes?
Yeah.
The A versus B?
Yeah, it's, it's, the, the A versus B is depending on the use in question and the area it's adjacent to. So in this case, it's, it's an office zone parcel adjacent to our C residential zoning, so they would be required normally type B. And just during, just in the spot right here where the play area is going to be, it's going to be just a regular green belt, and then as soon as it widens out, it goes back into that type B that they're actually required. So they only got the, the variance for this section right here.
So when, that's not what I was.
Oh, sorry.
So when you say regular green belt, it's going to stay the way it is right now?
No, they will have to install landscaping. So instead, instead of having to install the type B, the wider fifty foot wide, it's just going to be the traditional thing that you would have on a, on a, on the road frontage.
Okay, so I have the same question again for the applicant that I had previously for the other applicant, and that concerns the play area. And then you talked to me a bit about safety, safety precautions being taken with that area in terms of fencing from the road, so on and so forth.
Sure.
Again. My name's Ken Jones, Studio and Drink Architects, eleven, fourteen, South Washington, Lansing, Michigan. And I can address technical issues, and the owner applicants here to address business issues if you have those questions. The, the play area is surrounded by a fence, so it'll be a vinyl fence there, you know, to basically provide buffer as well as security for the students in the area. It surrounds the entire playground space. So, yeah, that, that does it better than I can, than I can explain it.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, do you anticipate removing the hard surface from that play area?
Yes.
That was Mr. Kozinski.
Yeah.
Mr. Moudry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
It was said that the daycare facility is only going to occupy part of this building?
Yes.
Okay, is there anticipated problems with the rental of the other part of the building?
The other part is, at this point, office space, and will remain office space for entities which are pseudo-related to the, to the daycare, other fast-profit organizations and things related to the daycare. So while they're not directly related there, we don't expect any challenges between the two. They are on two different floors of the building, and the way this building is constructed is there is no access between floors. So there's access from the exterior of the building to the lower floor, and from the exterior of the building to the upper floor. So broad practical purposes, it's two different buildings as far as the occupants are concerned.
So the landlord
is the daycare operator?
Take care of.
Correct. Okay. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So I will say this, according to.
Mr. Weinfeld?
Sorry, thank you, Mr. Chair. I will say this, if, if the renderings are accurate depiction of what's going to be happening around the site, it will certainly beautify the site, so I look forward to that for sure. Thank you.
That's the plan. I support.
All right. Any other questions of the applicant or staff?
What are the?
Mr. McConnell?
The chair. What are the parking requirements for the?
For this one, it meets, like, I can pull up the, the ordinance standards. I don't remember off the top of my head what they, what they were, but they, they didn't meet the the standards that.
Matt, I, I have.
Oh, yeah.
That's my.
Yeah, no, yeah.
It, it, at this point, it looks like we are required thirty-one spaces on the site, and there are currently thirty-six that we will have in the end.
Yeah, because it's kind of a strange looking site, like, there's the two entrances, that all these spaces that are darker here would be, would be for the daycare use.
Mr. Proctor? I'm sorry, how many students do you anticipate having?
I'm going to, I'm going to ask the applicant operator if she can address that question.
Hi, I'm Tanya Sims, one, eighteen, Hume Boulevard, Lansing, Michigan, four, nine, one, seven. I, I really, we really want to, we really won't know the capacity until after we have our fire inspection. But my goal is to at least be a minimum of sixty. The space, from what I've seen, can hold up to a hundred or more, but my goal is a minimum of sixty. I think sixty is a good, is a good number for our preschool, school age program that plants a house there. So are there limits for age group? How many you can have, like the infants? It is, yeah, with the, with the state of Michigan, with the child daycare licensing, they, they set that number. And so for like infants, it's one to four, one adult to four children, four infants, or, you know, for the toddlers, it's one to eight, for three years and up is, you know, one to twelve, one meaning adult, twelve meaning the children. And so the state of Michigan regulates that, so they kind of lets us, they let us know how many children is approved for the space. So once everything gets done, we still have to go through Laura with all our licensing, so. And they kind of, they'll come in and let us know how many children that we can actually have, because it's thirty-six per, thirty-six square feet per child. Thank you. You're welcome.
Yeah, Mr. Moudry? Ms. Sims? Do you think that one thing?
Yeah.
So you're going to walk to work?
I'm just excited that I can work where I live at, you know, it's just, it's, it's exciting. So my goal was always to, you know, work in Delta Township, and you know, it just so happened that that building came affordable, and I was like, I'm going to do it. So, yeah, I live right on the street.
Good, good. Thank you. Any other questions on the applicant? You. Mr. Proctor?
Do you anticipate having a bus service to pick up and drop off?
The bus already comes there. So Waverly School District, the bus comes in that parking lot. We, the bus, the, not in that parking lot, but the bus turns right in front of that building already. They did it for years. So as far as myself providing transportation, no. It's, that's, no. I mean, we won't, my, my program won't provide transportation. Parents will have to pick up and drop off their own children, and, and I don't know if you're familiar with licensing, but parents have to come inside to get their children, and they have to take their children out. So they're totally responsible for arrival and departure of their child.
So the bus that picks up and drop off already, how close proximity is that to your building?
It's right on Hume Boulevard. So they, it's like right, see where the blue is at? They kind, they turn, they make a, they come down Otis, and they make a right onto Hume, and they drop off right there. The bus, the Waverly School Bus picks up and drop off right there.
Thank you.
So pertaining to the school age children, those children that go to school, if, if we do have children that is a part of Waverly School District, and they come to our program, then they, I mean, it's kind of perfect for them, because the bus picks them up, and, and they can pick them up and drop them off right there at that program.
Thank you.
In that case, they do not need that. In that case, they do not need the. Parent, parent, parent to accompany them?
No, because they're school, well, well, they're schoolagers. And so just like now, um, we have, I have children in my program right now that goes to the, that takes the bus from my house. And so we just. Walk them down to the corner or, you know, we, I have a group daycare home right now.
Okay.
And so um I'm licensed through the state right now. And like I have children who catch the bus in the morning time and then some that catch the bus in the afternoon time and they right there at that same spot.
I wasn't, I'm not familiar with that.
Oh, oh, yeah, so.
Mr. Chair. I just wanted to ask, pose the same question about. Safety, um, you're so, safety concerns because you're in a bigger facility. How do you keep the facility safe?
Well, we're um. It's pretty much far the same thing, you know, we, we, you know. We have a, we will have a, some type of control lock on our program, on our doors. And so parents will be buzzed in and buzzed out. Um, but no, you know, we, that's what he will handle as far as our security with the doors, but as far as like. Children, they were, they cannot leave unless they're, unless it's someone that's on their emergency contact. Who can take them and pick them up. So children are only allowed to leave with the people who is designated for them to leave with. So because these are, you know, little children that we're dealing with, you know, they don't have just access to go out of the building on their own or anything like that. And so. The fenced play area um is where we will go with them with say, with as far as safety and we all have to maintain. Ratio even when we're outside with the children. So licensing is really strict with that.
And, and I'll add one more point to that, that inside the building, there'll be a vestibule system where somebody can come in through this first set of doors. The second set of doors is locked, they have to be buzzed in, but they'd be full, full visible through the glass doors, so they would know where they're buzzing in.
Yeah. Thank you.
And same thing, so kids couldn't leave through those doors, right?
Mr. Whitefield.
Matt. Was it necessary to uh? Notify residents in the neighborhood and?
Yeah, 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 we, yeah, we sent uh, yeah, three hundred feet and didn't, didn't receive any feedback.
Thank you.
Ms. Proctor.
So when parents come in and get buzzed in, do they initial to sign out their child?
Oh, yeah, we have, we use electronic system where they have to sign in and sign out, but we also, I'm traditional with the pen and paper. So, you know, but yeah. And it's a, it's a requirement through licensing as well that a parent has to sign their child out and sign their child, sign their child in and sign them out.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Mr. McConnell. There's, there's an authorized grandfather, I know the security, so. I appreciate it. Um. You're operating now a group home, did you say?
Yeah.
That's quite a transition from daycare to group homes. What's the rationale?
Um, it's, if I can be honest without, um. You said, what is it, what? Say it again.
What's the rationale for going from group home to daycare?
Just more kids. More. Um, more activities, more planning. Um, I've been doing it for twenty-eight years. And so like right now, I'm licensed for fourteen. Um, they gave us a variance through the state of Michigan. And so, um. And I operate right now. Because of the need twenty-four hours. So I have parents that come. All times of the day. When I open my program, it will strictly be six to six or six to five thirty. Um, but the only big difference with going from a group home to a childcare center is more staff, of course, and um. More rules. Pretty much. That's, that's pretty much the only difference. If I can just be honest with you, we have to, we have to, it requires more staff. And there's more rules that we have to follow. Um.
Just that they are my decision, I'm, I'm just.
No, 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 yeah, it's, no, I, I totally understand. It is just, you know, more children and it's um. And with the state of Michigan, um, it's, you know, we have a lot of training that we have to, it's not just, just can't just come in and start taking care of kids. It just don't work that way anymore. So they require a lot of training, a lot of child development training and Michigan Registry does a great job with that as well. We're getting providers trained. So that, you know, they offer a lot of great training for us, hands-on and virtual.
Ms. Proctor.
Just back on that, so are you going to close the group home?
I don't know yet because I have clients who, because I have clients who work non-traditional hours. Um, I don't really, I don't know yet. I can't answer that yet. Um, because I have parents who come at four o'clock in the morning. I have clients that has to be to work at five thirty. And so they drop off at five o'clock. Your traditional childcare program does not open that early. So the traditional childcare program usually opens between six and six thirty. And they close at five thirty, but I have um clients who work in the medical field and their hours are three to eleven or seven to seven. You know, and so I'm there to fill the gap and. You know. It's, it's hard to, you know, tell a parent that, hmm, you know, I, I can't do it when all they're trying to do is work and provide. And so I'm not really sure if I'm going to close that program, close my home on him yet. And if I do, it'll be um. I'll still keep it over, open for my non-traditional parents. So for those parents that do have to be to work. At six o'clock but need care starting at five thirty, or like I have a family of five right now. Who, she works in Fallerville. She has to be to work at five. She drops her kids off. It's by four twenty.
Oh, wow.
So I don't, I really, I can't really answer that honestly right now if I would close it down because I do provide those non-traditional care hours.
So. Just to follow up, I'm sorry, so. For those non-traditional students that you have in your home.
Mm-hmm.
Say someone drops them off at six AM and the daycare opens say at eight, for example, will you? Are you permitted to take those kids from your home down to the new daycare building?
They will have, they would have to be, they will have to be dual enrolled.
Okay.
In which, if I can be honest, I really don't wanna do that. That's probably, that's, that's the main reason why I'm unsure if I would close my doors. Right now, so I don't, you know, I don't see me closing. My program on Hume, even if it's just for those non-traditional, those parents who work in the healthcare, my firefighters and. All that, cuz I have those type of clients. So.
No one else?
Sounds like the community is lucky to have you.
Yeah.
So. So. Ms. Proctor. So are, will you have cooking facilities?
We will, we at our, at the new program. We will be installing a, a kitchen. We will be a part of the, the food program like I am now. And um, so. I'm a partner right now with Early Head Start and Early Head Start has already took interest in the whole, the upstairs. Um, the facility upstairs, so they've already took interest to leasing out the whole upstairs. And so. Hopefully, we can get that going so I can get that contract. So.
Thank you. I have no more questions.
Lot of problems. This is a public hearing. And uh. I don't see anybody to.
Making no way.
Making no way. Mr. Chair, move, we close the public hearing. Supports. The move by Mr. McConnell, supported by Mr. Moudry, that we close the public hearing. All favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion period. Restors.
Chairman prepared to make a motion.
Mr. Whitefield.
I move that the planning commission recommend to the Delta Township Board of Trustees approval of the special land use permit. For a child daycare facility as requested by Tanya Sims, hope I pronounced that right. As described in case number one dash twenty-three. Dash three for the following reasons of which there are two. With the following conditions of approval of which there is one.
Of course. The move by Mr. Whitefield, supported by Mr. McConnell. Move the. Daycare center. So. Uh, support, roll call vote.
Ms. Bradley?
Support.
Mr. Kozinski?
Support.
Mr. Moudry?
Support.
Mr. McConnell?
For.
Mr. Whitefield?
Support.
Mrs. Switzer?
Support.
Proctor votes, yes. Multiple carries.
Okay, Matt.
Uh, same thing, uh, I can get you on the board, uh, next, so that this is a recommendation of approval to the board. The final vote will be by the board next Monday, if, if you're willing, or if I can, I can do it. Couple weeks later if you're not available next Monday, next Monday is good. Okay, so I will. Or I'm sorry, actually, I'll touch base with the other person. Yeah, it'll be Tuesday. I'm sorry, I forgot about uh President's Day. So yeah, I'll be Tuesday, next Tuesday and I'll, I'll send a memo, a copy on that. Uh, it'll be on next Tuesday night, six o'clock, same, same room. Yeah. Alright, thanks a lot.
You, you'll have to watch the academy.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll pick this one out too, they have it, it's like. Yep.
So Mr. Bozek isn't here tonight, uh.
He, he's across the hall. I'm gonna go grab him.
No, I just.
I know, no, no, uh. So we will have a meeting in two weeks. Uh, the applicant for the uh special land use permit for the. Uh, truck terminal on Waverly Road is about to submit a, a traffic study to us, so that there should be that in two weeks. And then uh also. Probably the annual report as well. And I don't, I don't think anybody else has anything, but there'll be at least those two items.
Okay. It's on the twenty-seventh.
The twenty-seventh, that is correct, yeah. And, yeah.
Restors.
Yeah.
Any questions of uh, of that? Olive Garden, when's it gonna open?
I can call Dave if you'd like. I just, I think it's still, uh, I think it's getting close, but I'm not, not entirely sure. That's the final deadline on that.
Got the windows, huh?
Yeah.
Uh, they're putting stuff inside, so.
Yeah, good stuff.
You guys.
They may have to hire people.
Yeah, there was always that part of it, that, that, that custy part, yeah, yeah.
Uh, one thing that I wanted to mention, uh. The county drain office is going to be closed the rest of the week. They're having staffing problems.
Oh.
So if you call there and they are closed, that is the reason.
Okay, alright, I will.
Alright, thanks for the heads up. If you wanna go down there and check your drains or?
Keep draining the way it is in February if you might want to.
Restors, any other? Notes to for, for us to know about?
I just want you to, the last, and everybody was horrible to me.
Wonder Woman.
Yeah.
Why would they do that?
And we got out early.
Yeah. It's a tight, tight meeting, a tight meeting.
Yes, sir. It's like the management.
Wait for two weeks, I think that might be a long one.
Yep, there's nothing, no further business. Motion to adjourn.
Support.
The move by Mr. McConnell, supported by Mr. Bradley, that we adjourn, all favor say aye. Oh, oh, right. Motion period. What's everybody? Six forty-two.
Alright.
You're leaving a touch, Mr. Chair.
You got, you gotta shave at least ten minutes if you're gonna get close to the record. Well, we had to reach. Yeah, we were way under a half hour.
Six nineteen. I think not once you guys, quicker last.